All right, so we have a quorum and I'm going to start this meeting at 6:03. Can I get someone to make a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Okay, Barbara and a second by Natalie. All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you for that. All right, communications with parent citizens and staff. So is there anyone who would like to speak to the board? I'm not hearing anybody. Okay.
I had a communication that someone might have been sending documents relative to, relevant to something.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are. Okay.
I'm asking how I get items on the agenda.
You contact the school board chair, you contact Melinda Piper.
Do you have an email for the chair?
Sure, it's l.bertrand, B-E-R-T-R-A-N-D, at R-N-E-S-U dot org.
Okay, and once I submit it, how long would it be presented on the next meeting?
So it depends on what your request is. So once the request is received, then we would determine whether or not it actually needs to go on the agenda, if it's something I can help you with. But then it would, you'd probably go on to the next meeting, which our next meeting wouldn't be until June.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay. Then we are going to move on. We didn't have any reach outs to our, to communicate to anyone. Consent agenda, can I get someone to make a motion?
I'll motion.
Lauren and Leslie. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Consent agenda passes. Thank you. All right, global ends monitoring. We have a presentation by Renee on, it's an interim report on our 1.1 academic proficiency.
I just shared that with you today.
Oh, looks like we're having trouble with our Zoom as well, so we will have to.
Well, while you're doing that, can we move on to our monitoring report? Unless you think this would be quick.
Well, technically, we have to get this back going before the meeting's allowed to continue.
Oh, okay. Well, then, we're in a loop.
Is it because it's like looking for difference?
Oh, you just bumped off from R-N-E-S-U onto the other network. So you should be good now.
Okay, let's see if we're. Are we recording? It says that we're, looks like we're okay. Okay, now let's get back to, get back to the presentation, once I find it. Sorry, everyone, we were skipping around on the Wi-Fi bands, but now we should be back to regular, our Wi-Fi band, so now we'll start the presentation. Okay. All right, so this monitoring report, the global ends monitoring report, will be both Debbie and myself, we will be chiming in. One of the things that we have been working very diligently on this year is coming up with a way for us to be able to provide, provide information to the board, to our schools, and to our community regarding how our schools are doing, at least in the methods that the state is expecting us to provide information. And so the, this year, tying our global ends and the academic proficiency component to our continuous improvement plan is what we have chosen to do, because it has given us the direction that we need to support our campuses moving into next year. Not only through the data analysis to support our students, but also to provide the professional development that's needed in order for our staff and our teachers to better serve the students. So based on our VT cap ELA from last year, this chart gives you an idea of where we are, how we are performing at each grade level. So we range anywhere from in eighth grade, where we're below a quarter of our students, to sixth grade and fifth grade that are nearly at 40, 45% proficiency. When it comes to our math scores, our students are, again, our sixth grade is doing pretty well. We have, we have a upwards trajectory between third grade and sixth grade, but then, once we hit our middle school, you can see that we start to decline. And this past year, we had particular struggles with our eighth grade. And if you go back a year, you'll see that we had struggles in seventh grade.
So these, and these are the numbers for the current ninth graders.
Correct.
So my kids.
Yeah.
Our kids. This is a fun, this is a fun bar chart to read, I'll tell you.
So science, which is also a, it's a really interesting way that our state does science, we take it in fifth and eighth and in 11th. And as you can see, we, again, the, our eighth grade, our eighth graders from last year struggled in this test. It is, it is a heavy reading test, so that ends up coming out, that if you are, if you're struggling in reading, you're also going to struggle in your math test and in your, and in your science test. So Debbie, this is our, this is our STAR, would you like to take over?
Sure. So this is, so just to note, we did just finish, finish the VT cap, the data that you just looked at, that was last year's. Renee has explained how the state doesn't get us our data very quickly, so it won't be until July until we get this year's results. I would like to announce that we had 98% completion rate, which is enormous, I know.
And I, so that, that is like a huge compliment.
It is a huge.
To the work of Debbie, but also to the, to the, to the schools, to the teachers, to the principals, and to the test coordinators on the campuses, to get to the point where we, did you say we only had 32 total tests?
36 tests that were not completed.
36 tests.
Not students, tests, yeah.
So that is, that is an amazing number, so really, really proud of that.
Yeah, we completed over 1,700 tests, assessments in the district, so. And we were, I don't know if anybody knows, but we were at like a 70% at one point, so. So moving forward, this is, this is current data as of the winter, so January, February time, we are moving into our last round, actually, this week, so we'll have that more in June for you. But this is our local assessment, and the first batch is criterion reference, so this connects well with the state standards, so because the state standards are, or excuse me, VT cap is assessing our Common Core state standards, and this STAR, our internal one, is also assessing state standards. And this is often, they tell us that this is a predictor for how our students are going to do in VT cap, so our winter data right here should be a, we should be able to see some connections with how we did this spring. We'll see if that's true. We haven't really matched up those before, but you can see that our, our learners certainly fared better in some of the grade levels that they did not do so well in the VT cap last year. So I do want to sort of point out that you can see that we have that, fifth grade is always, in any school I've been in, kind of a, you may see a dip, there's a lot of changes, as we know, that happen in fifth grade, just with kids in general, but you'll see that we have sort of that rise, and then the fall, and then we rise again. So, and you'll hear more about that in the, with the CIP as to what we're going to do. So the next one, so this is ELA, next is math. You'll see, it's a little more drastic, but we have sort of a similar pattern, where we sort of rise, fall, and then rise again. We certainly do not have, are not showing as many students that are performing, that are proficient in, with our Common Core state standards in math. So we have work to do there as well. The next, I wanted to sort of show you this before, because many times, there's confusion between percentage of students who are proficient with the standards, and then students who are working above or below a certain percentile. And I wanted to sort of point out, because oftentimes, we say, we are looking to intervene for students that are working below the 35th or 40th percentile. And often, parents will say, what do you mean? We're, we're only looking at kids below a 40, they think, a 40%, when that's not really, that's not the case. If you look at this bell curve right here, you'll see at the very bottom, it's hard to notice, I tried to outline it, between the 60th percentile and the 84th percentile, that's within the average range. So they're not apples and oranges, thinking about percentages and percentiles. So the 40th percentile, which is what I've shown here today, is showing students that are around that, we feel that if students are working the 40th percentile or above, they're going to progress well with their class. Anything that's sort of 35th percentile and down, we're intervening, when we have sort of consistent data. So we'll be looking first at our math. And so these are the percentage of proficient students. Okay, so now we've got both here. We have, so let's just pick grade six. So grade six shows that about, a little over, actually, grade five shows a little over 50% of the students are working above the 40th percentile. And the 40th percentile means that we are, we feel confident that they're going to move along well, and they are, and that is comparing them to other students across the United States. That's not a one for one with our state standards, it's sort of a very broad metric, so.
So as Debbie mentioned, in the earlier slide, it was, the word criterion reference was right here, it is now shifted to the word norm referenced, meaning that it's relative.
Right, right. So you will, it's really, and it's really important to look at whether you're looking at criterion reference or normed reference data, because our normed reference data will often, students are often performing a little bit better, or more students are proficient, because it's a much broader, a broader set of criteria, or not criteria, I don't want to confuse you, but a much broader lens that we're looking at, whereas state standards, we're looking at very specific standards. So this is our, no, this is our math, and then our ELA. You can still see the comparison, though, to, we are performing better in ELA than we are in math, whether you're looking at criterion reference or norm reference data. And you can still see in both the math and the ELA, sort of those trends towards fifth and sixth grade, the good news here, look at seventh grade, and then we sort of bump off. That actually, that seventh grade data, I'm really excited to see their, to see their work this year. Now, remember, this set, this, who mentioned the ninth, so the ninth grade students, you'll notice that the ninth grade students in ELA performed more at that 40, or 40% of them were in good shape, above the 40th percentile. That was last year's eighth grade students. So we are certainly seeing, here, we're seeing some growth, we'll see how the VT cap, is that where we want to be? No, but we certainly are seeing some growth there. All right, next slide, Renee. So do you want me to, do you want to start us off here?
Sure, I can do this one. So thank you, Debbie. So as we were diving into the data over the course of the year, this is the, these are the five things, these are the five indicators that we're going to be focusing on for our continuous improvement plan and the, and our schools. So number one, we know that we need to make sure that our students are in our classrooms, that they're in their seats, and it's important for us to not only track them as if they're here and dealing with them as if they're truant, but trying to get to the root causes, to find out what is causing them to miss so many days. And so we're using the term that is used in, in the state language of chronic absenteeism, which is 10% of the school year or more, which is 18 days or more. If they, if they have missed that many more, that many days, they are now chronically absentee, and we, like this past year, where we held Saturdays, where we went out and visited families, we'll be doing that again this coming year. Really excited about bringing on a data manager who can make sure that we are really following up with bi-weekly reports for our principals and for central office, so that that way, this remains very, very present, or very much in the front of our mind on a regular basis. We are, the second one is academic performance and growth. We want to make sure that for all learners, that they are growing at least a year. If we have students who are behind more than a year, then we need to make sure that they are growing more than a year. And that, and the data that we're collecting from STAR and VT cap and other screeners are giving us that information that we can share with our teachers, so that they know which students need to be, need to have that focus. One of the big components that we are going to be utilizing next year is a collaboration with the Rutland County Restorative Justice Center. Right now, they are already providing assistance for some of our students who are chronically absentee and truant. They also help some of our students who may have already trying to get criminal charges or other charges off of their record, but we're going to bring them in, so that that way, they will train our teachers, train all the adults on the campus in restorative practices, so that that way, we can make sure that we're using the same vocabulary and serving the students all in similar fashions. So that that way, when we have, students are either dysregulated, or they just need somebody to help them get through some sort of issue between one another, or between an adult, we have that common language and those common practices. Graduation is going to be a big, another charge for our data manager, because our graduation for the snapshot was listed at 75%. Our graduation for 23, 24 is listed at 72%. If we, if we drop below 67%, then we become one of the student, one of the schools in the state that will go on comprehensive supports, and that is, that means the state will be telling us what to do, and we would not like that to happen. So part of that is making sure that we're building belonging within the school, building an inclusive culture, and providing classes that students really want to take, making sure that they are taking advantage of staff or early college, or whatever it is that is on our campus, whether it's clubs, athletics, or classes themselves, making sure that we are providing them what they need. Additionally, we are going to be utilizing the Panorama Culture and Climate Survey for all students throughout the district this year, all teachers and staff this year. So we'll have that data to build going into next year. We will also have that for families, probably by the end of the first semester or January, so that we can get feedback from the community. And then finally, really aligning what we're calling college career and life readiness, involving exploration as early as the elementary grades, and making sure that we're all on the same page in, and trying not to create any barriers for our students along the way, so that that way, all students will have the opportunity to choose a career or choose to go to college along the way.
What was the graduation rate? We can't fault them.
For 23, it was 75%. For 24, it was 72%.
And what level?
That's the four, that's the four-year graduation rate. We, if we get to 67%, then that won't, that, that's when we hit the comprehensive supports.
Do you know where we are for this year?
That's, I, we have been trying.
Okay.
To determine what, but the data is really difficult in our current system.
Is that factor, is that the number of students this year who are currently enrolled and going to graduate, or like students who have kind of dropped out throughout the past four years?
So when you started, so that was our initial cohort.
So that's the initial number from ninth grade?
From, from ninth grade.
Okay.
Then, on, that was day one.
Yep.
Or really, October 1. After October 1, any student who left, or any student who came in, changes the denominator.
Ah, okay.
So let's say, for example, a student leaves, goes to Middlebury, they're completely out. They're out of the numerator, out of the denominator.
Okay.
Let's say they just choose to stop coming to school, they're out of the numerator, but they're still in the denominator.
Okay.
If you choose to go and get a GED, you're out of the numerator, still in the denominator. So when, the, the number that your class started with is 128. And so that is the, the component of, because when, say, for example, that we have students who, I don't know, they decided to go to Arizona.
Yeah.
And we put in a records request for that school in Arizona, they never send it back.
Yeah.
That's technically a dropout.
Okay.
So that's why it's taking.
Now we're at 83.
Yeah, so that's, that's why it's really important for us to, to, to track this every year.
Yeah.
And this is something that I've let the, let the state know, they need to hold superintendents more accountable for this, but by the same token, they also need to have better data systems where they're telling us, not just giving us the number at the end, they're showing us how to do this, so.
Sorry, could you give me 23 and 24?
No, I'll give it.
So it's like 65, you got about 65% of the original.
If, nothing, if, if we can't account for people to leave, 75.
It was 75 and then 72.
Thanks, that's crazy. For four-year graduation. For six-year graduation, it was 83 in 23, and 75 in 24. This is going to be wild. So just put everything underneath a square root, and we'll be fine.
Okay.
So probably already have covered this part, but essentially, we want to make sure that we're monitoring, we're coaching, we're providing additional learning for our teachers and for the board, and for our community to know that these are things that we need to focus on. And we've embedded all of this in our continuous improvement plans that you will see and hopefully approve in June. And even though they're not due until August.
September.
Or September, we want to turn them in early, so we can focus our professional learning over the summer for our teachers and for our administrators, so that when we come back, we're all on the same page. Otherwise, we'd be kind of starting late on this.
And Renee, all of our academic goals and our, we'll see, safe and healthy schools, this is sort of a summary of all, so you'll be getting, you'll be reviewing four continuous improvement plans, so each school has to have one. And this, instead of repeating them, I just sort of summarized all of them for academic and health, safe and healthy schools.
Okay. And, yeah, and they're all there? Uh, let's see, yeah, we've talked, yes.
So first, I had to make sure I understood what a criterion reference versus norm reference, and I had it right, but I want to make sure.
Yeah.
So basically, you've got criteria that have been set by some sort of.
So think of the standards, think of the standards that, for, the Common Core standards for English and math, or the next generation's science standards for the science test.
That's criterion reference.
That's criterion.
And norm reference is comparing the performance to other students.
Correct.
So like, think of the SAT as norm referenced.
Okay.
And the thing with norm reference is that, like, across the country, when you think about during the pandemic, everybody was impacted by the pandemics. We sort of all, sort of moved up and down. But we, the standards doesn't, that doesn't change, right?
I was going to ask if they, if they've altered any of the standards post-pandemic.
They haven't altered any of the standards, however, the assessment companies, if you will, STAR just did one over the summer. They went ahead and, you know, they look at lots of data, and they recalibrated their sort of, I, a lot for their, certainly for their norm reference, they did some calibration.
So I am struggling mightily, because my three children are in this abysmal cohort here. And as I have mentioned, and I will continue to mention, they did not have math all year. They had a semester of math, which I think, again, is terrible, and they're going to have one semester of math next year. So my concern, both as a parent, but also as a school board member, is what is being done for that particular year of kids who seem to have fallen through some cracks, because the rising ninth graders, I believe, are going to have year-round math. I'm not sure, but I know there's been some adjustments to things that, like foreign language and math, that negatively, seemed to have negatively impacted the current ninth graders, and then are going to benefit, it's going to shift for the eighth graders. So like, what are we doing for this lost, this lost cohort? Because I don't want to lose those kids, regardless of whether they're in my family, but that also adds to my, you know, incentive to see something change.
So for the ninth graders, there will be, there will be math, both, English and math both semesters next year.
I know math, yes. I'm pretty sure for ELA as well.
I think that's for the upcoming ninth graders, that's not your ninth graders.
Okay, no, yeah, so I mean, now I'm talking about the rising 10th graders, what's, what's going on for them?
Right. So, so Otter Valley is looking at some double blocks for students that, I don't want to call it a double block, but extended sort of time for students that had, that are, you know, still falling behind based on our STAR data. We have hired two new interventionists this year. This, these are just, happened to be, we had two people resign, we brought in two different people. So we have that happening as well. And so it's really going to be looking at, really looking at that summer or spring STAR data to be making a plan for next year as to, as to what's gonna, you know, what the work is going to be.
Okay. Natalie?
Have you looked at the data, especially for this cohort, because I have a son in this grade too? What were their scores pre-pandemic? And after? And so they were in like fifth and sixth grade. What is it that they may have missed or didn't get in those years that's holding them behind, that we need to work on?
So something that we haven't mentioned, because I'm a strong believer, and I hear this from Renee too, that we never want to sort of excuse away the data, right? We don't want to say, oh, well, you know, but there is, in speaking with many of my colleagues, my peers, as well as reading some different articles, those math scores in, in eighth grade, like what we saw in 23 and 24, was sort of a, in ELA scores, that was a class that across, certainly this area, and even a little bit wider, did poorly on, on VT cap. So I will say, I think that there was, I believe there was, they They mentioned that they needed to retool things for this year. Wasn't there some sort of change, Renee, with BT cap? I thought that they said in year two, they were...
So, in year one... So, in year one, it was a very rushed job to get it implemented. Scores were a little higher than the S-MECK scores were the previous year. So, given the... Now, there are a year used to it, that there is a possibility that they kind of said, okay, so now, let's do what we would normally do. And as a result... So, with us only having really two years' worth of data, it's challenging for us to know what more we can be doing. But that's why we have other ways of looking at it, including the STAR tests. But there is... You do raise a very good point about... And Brent, I know you've brought this up before, too, about math one semester and then math... And now, no math the other semester. So, that's a research problem that we need to dive deeper into to find out the, you know, the comparison between... If students take math the same semester that they take the VT cap versus the other semester, what's the performance level? So, that's number one. And then try to find something to anchor that up against. But then, secondly, with your students going into 10th grade, that is something that I think, yeah, we likely need to have some conversations with the high school to find out. If we have another year where we have, let's say, 96% of our students not pass the math test, how are we going to provide intervention services for all 96% of them? Because that's going to be... That's going to be a challenge in and of itself.
Yeah. Because I just wondered, did they miss some kind of fundamental somewhere along the way that puts the entire class behind? And I don't...
They were stuck at home on a computer.
They were in fourth and fifth grade, actually. Yeah. Because 20... Yeah. I mean... And also, I appreciate the desire to want their scores to rise because I want that because it does reflect a reality. But also, their performance relative to when they take the test, if they're still not getting the math full year, they're still losing something. There's... I don't know... I mean, I'm sure there's data out there that exists about kids who only have a semester of math in a school year versus kids who have a full year of math. It seems just logical that a full year of math is going to... They're going to retain the information. So, if they're tested when they're having math and they do better, well, that's great. But then they still have the semester where they don't have it. And I feel like that is the actual issue.
Well, that's why we would do it so that that way, we would have the research. And the research plus any data that we have locally to suggest that that's what we need to do.
And then, what can be... I mean, if there's a universal lower performance in this cohort, even if there are higher-performing kids in that cohort who are doing okay, like, the higher-performing kids aren't going to get those interventions. But they still may not be where they should be criterion-wise. And that's of concern to some people, like me. I'd like to see my kids able to do the math that's going to be expected of them later on. And this is the time that they would be getting it, right? So... But they won't get interventions, probably, you know, because they're not going to be red flags. They're still not getting what they should be getting. And it's not just my kids. But, you know, anyone who's in the, say, like, geometry in ninth grade, you know, when they... As they go forward, are they going to be doing as well as their peers in other ninth grades around the country? Or will they show up at college and be like, I don't understand this calculus class because I didn't have this background?
And if the only reason we're not doing, like, every class every day all year long is because we can't handle the students in the hallway. I mean, I know that was brought up. Honestly, I think that's a sad excuse. Because there's a lot of things go on in the hallway. But there's still teachers or somebody who could stand in the hallway while they're in there for the seven minutes they get. I mean, it's seven minutes between classes. It's not like there's a lot of time to go from this side of the school to a locker to this side of the school. And I don't know. Do you guys use lockers anymore?
I don't. I haven't since...
Everybody carries a backpack with them.
Yeah, backpack.
That floors me.
90-pound backpack. I had a locker this year. I did get made fun of by my peers. But I stopped putting things in my locker because I didn't have enough time to, like, stop before class, which was really annoying.
I forgot.
That floors me. I used to always do that. My kids always dragged their backpack around.
They also only have three minutes to get to class.
Oh, three minutes, because it's changed. So, we had seven. So, I mean, from one class to your locker to there... I mean, it was tight, but you could do it anyways. It was... You were on mission to get there, and there wasn't a lot of time to horse around.
Imagine that in three minutes, though. I had to give up my locker.
Well, so if you went back to every class every day, you wouldn't have three minutes. You could have more. Because that's what it used to be. You had seven.
It was forever ago. But when I lived in New York in middle school, we had like three or four minutes. Sorry. Sorry, six years ago. Three... We had like three or four minutes to go to class, go to locker, and then back. Because lockers were the norm.
And it makes it really tight. But it can be done. But you've got a lot of time to goof off and get in trouble in halls, is all I'm saying.
You're not lugging around a 30, 40-pound backpack.
Yeah. It can be good for you.
So, I heard a story, and I don't know. It's... I will have to go back and check its veracity with other folks that this four classes, one semester, four classes the other semester, was supposed to be like a trial run for one year.
Yeah, a long time ago.
A long time ago.
And it never went back.
And it never went back. So, that's something...
Forgot it was a beta test.
But if that was a long time ago, how would we go down to research to see if we're going up or down or good or bad after all these years?
So, my guess is, I don't know if this is the first time that it's been questioned. But now that we're looking at data and we have the data to show that we're concerned about, it forces the question of, are our systems that we're using right now the best ones to help support our students? And if they're not, then we need to change them.
A couple of things. Natalie asked a question about how did the current ninth-grade cohort do like in the past? What I have... I have other data, but readily available, that I could pull at my fingertips, says that in the spring of 2023, so when they were in seventh grade, there were more like 30% of students, still low, proficient in math and nearly 50% proficient in ELA. So, there is a possibility that we may see a jump in the VT cap scores this year if there was this sort of... And that... If there was sort of this shift because it was a new test in 2023 and then they ship... Changed... Made some changes in '24. And, you know, we'll see what '25 looks like. I can't... I mean, that's just sort of a possibility. Michael did say... I asked him a question to make sure I wasn't missing anything. He did say that about 40% of students in 10th grade take two different math classes. So, they are... Those students are getting a year's worth of math. But that's 40... That's still 40%. So, they are seeing... Those students are seeing math all year long.
How do they...
Because they're doubling up because they're taking geometry and then they're taking whatever the next one is.
Those are usually the college-bound kids.
Right. And if they're... I mean, if... I'm unclear as to, like, what kind of advice they get or if they're... I mean, my kids came to me and said, I signed up for blanky-blank. And I said, do you have math all year long? And they said, no. They hear me rant about this a lot. So, like, if they're, you know... If them coming at their scheduling doesn't put them on some sort of path to, oh, we better take math two semesters. It seems like it's not... It seems like something is happening that is... Or something isn't happening that should be like, I really advise that you take two semesters of math, and here's how you could do it. Because, I mean, I don't know that a ninth-grade kid is going to say, please, I'd love to take two semesters of math. You know, sign me up. Oh, absolutely. Like, but it's advisable.
So, one of the things that we hope that you'll be hearing about in the near future, we mentioned it slightly earlier about the career advice going all the way down to the elementary level, is that we would like to have our four-year plans for really actually even down to seventh grade and a place for people to be able to see them readily, ideally, parents. So that that way, you as family can see which classes they are planning on taking over their career at the high school. So that that way, you can have those discussions and say, well, I see that you scored this here or that you did really well here. So, you should be planning on taking something more challenging or you probably need to have something that'll support you to get to that upper level. And so... But because right now, we do have our PLPs, but I don't know if they're readily accessible for families.
Jasmine?
I will just say that you... Ms. McCartney, our guidance counselor, she does tell you what classes you have to take and like what you should take. However, it's very reflective of definitely the effort you're putting in. So, if I were to tell her I really want to get into this competitive college, then she would say, okay, like, let's make sure you're taking competitive classes. But I don't think... She's not... She's definitely not encouraging everybody to take competitive classes, especially those that aren't necessarily super interested in a college career and more so the workforce. But also, there are a lot of people who kind of just want to get by. And she... I love Ms. McCartney. She did great for me. But I can also see how she could not be the most supportive for... And like push students who aren't pushing themselves.
And also, it was a little tough coming from middle school into high school. For example, I didn't take algebra in eighth grade. So... But I did really well in my, like, eighth-grade math class. So, I knew that I wanted to double up coming into my freshman year. But it's a little tougher with math and science courses because I think, at least for science, you have to be recommended by a previous science teacher as to what science class you're able to take next. And I don't think that necessarily goes the same way for math. But I think it's like a loose polit... It does? Yeah. It's also a loose policy that you can only double up once. But for, like, if you're incredibly gifted, then that might make an exception. But also, if... I've had friends that were taking integrated math classes and that was just way too easy and it was incredibly hard to go from that to another, like, to algebra or trigonometry just because the teacher that they had before was like, mm, I don't know, you're here. But that's a huge jump. So, it was a little bit limiting in some perspectives.
Thank you for both hearing questions.
Yeah.
But before we move on, for the purpose of the record, can I get the last names of Brenda and Andrea online?
That's Brenda Fleming, I'm assuming.
Oh, I have one more question. Are we... Can we get access to our children's tests?
So, your... The VT cap?
Uh, yeah.
So, the VT... We can certainly get another copy. They are sent out...
No, as long as you're...
They're mailed out actually in the fall. So, but we can get...
I mean, not just... I mean, not just the scores, but the actual test.
So, they don't actually give you sort of the... These are all the questions that were on the test. They will give us examples of different things. And... But they won't. But they'll just give us sort of the scores that have some other information on it. That's really all that we get.
And do they have, I mean, example... I mean, is that like... You could look at an example test to just get an idea of what's on these...
Like, what's going to be on it? Or what was on it?
Well, or just...
Or like I said, like, what does a question look like?
Yeah.
I think there are some.
So, there are. You can... There are like practice tests that our teachers do with the kids that have... With our students that have sort of examples of questions that they're going to see. So...
I've let the AOE know to let me be part of their next bargaining or whenever they're recruiting another one because in Texas, you get all of that stuff. And so, I don't know if they knew when they were trying to do the VT cap that they could ask for those things. And so, as a result, it's... We're doing our best to figure out as many of the components of the test that we don't have access to, even the scores on the back end. Whereas in other states, it's a lot easier to find out because they're there for you.
That'd be great.
Okay. Any other questions in regards to this presentation?
No. It's just Christina Gibson. Real quick, this isn't a question, but this is rather a comment.
I'm sorry. We don't have... Christina, we don't do public... We don't do public comment. Public comment for people online is only during the public comment time. So, unfortunately, if you have something you'd like to say, you can do it through our reach out or whatever. But can't be done during our board meeting. I'm sorry.
Extremely disappointing in this entire process. You guys have been very difficult. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to EL Monitoring Report 2.10, Safety, which should be in your board packet. Can I get someone to make a motion to accept the report?
I move to accept it.
Okay. And is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? And do you want to say anything about it?
I can go through really quickly utilizing a presentation that I made so that that way, if you haven't had the opportunity to completely read it, since it has a lot of... It has a lot of, I guess, links and things like that. So, let me share this. Okay. So, just want to go through this. This is a newer one of our executive limitations. And it largely surrounds... It probably has a lot to do with the law that was passed recently that's requiring school districts to have emergency operation plans in place before the end of this school year. So, the goal is recognize that we want to, you know, So, the goal is recognize that we want to, you know, that our effective learning and teaching takes place in a safe, secure, and welcoming environment, and that safe schools continue to improve attendance, student achievement, community support. Safe schools are priority of the district, and the district is committed to providing a safe environment in schools, school vehicles, and school-sponsored activities. And so my interpretation is to make sure that we do that, making sure that we have our emergency operation plans in place to make, to cover our district buildings and our grounds. And so, those of you who've come into our buildings, you know that we have cameras, that we, as you walk in the building, particularly for the first time, we ask you for a form of I D to make sure that you, that, that you are able to come in, we know who you are, and we have regular assessments to make sure that we don't have security gaps. Every opportunity that we have for students, we make sure that we are supervising them, whether it's in the hallways or in the classrooms, on our school buses, and our school activities, if they're off-site with coaches and others, if they're onsite, making sure that we have stipended individuals here looking after our students. Already spoke a little bit about the visitor management, that we, you'll know that you have to come in, you got to buzz in, we see you on camera. When you come in the building, you present your I D, and we record you through the Raptor, the Raptor system. We'll give you a temporary badge, and then the people who are at the front desk receive training on it, as well as the principals on the back end who will get an alert if the, if the Raptor system lets them know that there's a person of concern visiting the campus. This is the piece that was, I think, also kind of interesting to me when I got to Vermont, is that we have a fire, we have fire drills and other emergency drills on a regular basis, and that those have to be recorded, they have to be timed, they have to, then there's also the, making sure that we're following a kind of a reflection afterwards to make sure that we are living up to our, the spirit of our emergency operation plans. So we also have been required to have threat assessments to make sure that if we have a, whether it's a student or an employee or a community, somebody from the community, if there is going, if there is a reason to believe that we are unsafe, that we have to go through a threat assessment procedure, this is where, and you'll see shortly, that we, while we have internal procedures, it's also really important for us to have partners along the way, usually our first responders. So like our law enforcement, like our medical services, our fire department, and our mental health professionals. And so when we do have a crisis, of course, board, the board will be notified immediately, but then we also have to let families know, we have to, if it rises to the level of a major event, we have to let the public know as well. And if there is a reason to believe that, for, like a tanker truck falls and lets its hazardous materials fall in front of Lothrop, O C A, or O V, we've got to get that emergency alerts out to not, not just our families, but also to the, to the community at large.
Do we have a notification system?
Uh, sure. And then these last few slides are just all the, all the links that are in the report, but I just wanted to be able to go through it fairly quickly, so you could have an idea of what's in the report. And then we'll, I'll also include this as part of the, the, the document packet that'll go online.
Hearing none. All of those in favor of the monitoring report 2.10, safety, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to governing style. We have two board monitoring reports to look at. The first one is 4.1, governing style. It was, I think, on page 34, maybe 36 of your packet. I will change dates to be.
The first, that's the first one, 4.1?
Yep.
Um, under examples, those are out of date.
Oh, okay. Yep, we can take those out then. All right. I mean, we've gotten better?
And pretty much all of them are out of date.
All right, all right.
Like three years out of date.
We've gotten better, and yeah.
Yep, look at that, Susanna White's presentation on 51822 is still in there. Okay.
And that's the same for the other one, too, 4.10.
Okay. All right, well, I will take out examples.
Hiring process, yeah, for Kristen, nope, that's not relevant. We don't even meet twice a month.
Not right now, but we will again in June.
Okay.
So that was just because of the facilities.
I'm a boss.
That's just a, that's true. That's true. All right, well, let's talk about 4.1. Is there anything else that needs to change other than the examples? Is there any examples that you'd like to change or put in there?
So, let's see, the first, I mean, the very first thing on the first page of 4.1, it talks about planning for the future, probably talk about the facilities committee.
Okay.
And what they've been doing, that's the future.
Okay.
So is the report of student performance, the testing and plans to improve that?
Yeah, well, that's all stuff that we're, well, I think that's more administration, that's not, I mean.
Well, we're, we're asking questions, but.
But we are asking questions, yes. Okay.
Well, I mean, we had to cut our professional development out of the budget.
Yeah, we did. So there isn't a lot of professional development that we have this year. Hopefully that will change next year. Okay, so I've taken the examples out, I've changed the time period for 4.1 governing style, and I've talked about the facilities committee that we're using to look to the future. Okay, anything else you want to change or add? Otherwise, we'll move on. Okay, so I'm moving on, since I don't hear anything. The next one is 4.2, board job description, or board job description, yeah, that's what that says. I'm changing the dates. We still are meeting twice a month, we're just effectively not doing that while we do the facilities committee, but that will change again next month, when you'll be here for both of us. We can change the, we can save the hiring process for Renee. And we did have a successful pair of bus drivers negotiations. So, that's still true. Annual meeting's still true. We do review all of our policies. I think we should change the she understands to they understand, since we now have a new superintendent.
Number six, it talks about using the surplus to give back to the taxpayers two years in a row, and I.
Oh, we haven't done that, no, we have not done, that was, that was during, oh, yeah, okay. Basically, what we've done is fund the facilities. Fund facilities and, and/or, what's that thing called, after-school program.
And, number, well, it's like 7.1, it needs just a bit of tweaking to reflect the current.
Oh, yeah, so we're, we're just in the middle, well, we're, we're negotiating currently with the teachers. We're currently in the middle of negotiating with the teachers, and we've had successful negotiations with bus drivers. Anything else, anyone? Okay, thank you, we will move on. Community linkage, board member recruitment, open seats, so, still looking for a waiting member. We're looking at a large member, since Greg had to leave at the end of his term. We are looking for a Pittsburgh member, since Jessica needed to step back, and we are also looking for a Brant, is Brandon, Brett, Brent? You're Brandon?
At-large, yeah.
You're at-large? Okay, and we need another at-large member, as Brent will be leaving us after tonight. So, he doesn't, he doesn't want to leave us, but he has other commitments. So, so, we do need to start looking for board members, I mean, we've been talking about it a lot along. Hopefully, we'll get some letters in for our June meeting, and we can talk about doing some recruitment there. So, world language program discussion, so that was a carryover from last month. I left it on there, because I wasn't sure if we still needed to continue.
So the, kind of the long story short right now, is that we have a job posting that we're going to have to alter, because right now, we have, it's been open for almost six weeks and have had no applicants. So we will likely need to figure out how we can make that.
Is this elementary?
It's elementary, yeah.
Okay.
How we can make it more, I guess, available to people who are interested in applying, because right now, it's the same job position that we had last, or this current year, which is at three schools. And so, we have nobody for that role right now, so we're going to have to look and see where we are in our, in our potential budget, and see what we are able to do by altering the job description to potentially two schools or something. So, we just wanted to give you an update on that.
If you reduce it to two schools, that means one school will not get world language? Is that my understanding?
Not necessarily. We would try to, we would still try to cover all of the schools, which would mean that we would try, we would have to, if we did two schools, then we'd have to find enough to be able to cover, find additional money to cover, that's where the additional money would come from, would be to make it maybe two and two, rather than three and one, it's just, it's, so we're, we have to work, work out the math and work out the personnel.
Okay. Okay. Student cellphone ban discussion.
So I will, oops, I will invite Kevin to sort of chime in, as he was on the committee as well. We put out a sort of call for families, for teachers, for administrators, we know everyone's busy. The cellphone committee was a, a small but mighty four of us. It ended up, we had Kevin, we had Abby Brodowski, the O V assistant principal, associate principal, and then we also had Stacy Ferrenton, I think she's on the call today, who is the Lothrop. So I was pleased that we had an elementary voice and an O V voice, so that was helpful as well as, as well as the board and community member voice. So I'm not sure, I sent a lot of information to everyone, and I will tell you, the committee reviewed even more. What we tried to do is send you sort of the best of what we had. We sort of looked at, next slide, please, we sort of looked at a few different lenses while we were working. It's easy to get caught up in sort of, like, do we have a problem at the school? It's really easy to say our cellphone's a problem. And we realized that it was bigger than that. It's really about what is the latest research telling us about the impact of cellphones on our students, our cellphones and other personal devices problems in our school, a problem in our school, and then what is happening in other schools around the state and country. So I think back to when, you know, you think about, over a lifetime, sort of, we saw that seatbelts became a thing, right? Because we, there's sort of a lot of seatbelts, and then there is the, it's the, the research behind that. We think about smoking, that was another one, that it was, used to be in schools and lounges, believe it or not, and, yeah, it was in school then, right? Yeah. So it's sort of like, and it feels odd to compare the two, but when you think about it, if all of the kids are going into the smoking lounge and using it, it's not a problem, but we found out that, like, that was not safe and healthy for our school, our students to be doing that. So that's where we sort of said, instead of focusing just on our cellphone's a problem in school, we have to think broader about that. So we brought you sort of some information, and I'll leave it up to the board as to how much you want me to share tonight. The first piece, the next slide, has a video connected to it.
Wrong way.
Yeah, about 1:35, about five minutes of, three or four minutes even, sort of, gives you the gist of, this sort of talks about everything that I just mentioned.
Now to an issue affecting students and educators in schools everywhere, the debate over banning cellphones from the classroom. Phone-free schools are becoming more common across the U S. Several states have introduced policies that ban or restrict cellphone use in schools, with more than a dozen other states and Washington, D.C., introducing statewide legislation to ban or restrict them in the future. The issue is a rare instance of bipartisanship, uniting state leaders on both sides of the political aisle. Legislators have pointed to harmful mental health impacts from smartphone use to justify the bans, and with screen time rising among teens, those in favor of phone bans say they lead to fewer distractions in the classroom. Our Pamela Brown met with students at a high school in Arlington, Virginia, where students are required to put their phones inside magnetic locking pouches every morning. Here's what some of them have to think about the policy.
Raise your hand if you're a fan of this new phone-free policy at the school.
Um, it's complicated.
This Virginia high school looks like any other during passing periods, but notice, one thing's missing.
I remember the first day I was sitting in physics, my phone was locked up in my back, and I kept reaching for it, but I couldn't, and the only thing I can do is sit on my computer and listen.
Wakefield High is a guinea pig of sorts. Students are expected to store their phones in this magnetic locking pouch throughout the day. At first, there was resistance.
People were putting dents and holes in the wall, like, there are tables we had to, like, get fixed.
Right after we got them, when I walked into the cafeteria, all you hear is like the bang.
Greg Cabana, a government teacher at Wakefield, noticed it, too.
The fact that they're banging pouches around the cafeteria, trying to unlock their phone, this is proving our point right here, of how meaningful and how powerful that phone is.
Cabana's been advocating for stricter regulations on phones for years, after feeling like his role as an educator was secondary to being the phone police.
As a teacher, it was just daily judgment calls, put your phone away, put your phone away, should I say something to the student, should I keep on teaching, should I talk to them in the hallway, is it worth it?
It may be too soon to fully understand the impact of phones on academic performance, especially talking to this group of high-performing students.
I think it depends on who you were before the phone policy.
But other benefits inside the classroom are clear.
Even just picking it up for a small time can take away from, like, your learning experience.
It's not a small improvement, it is, it is a dramatic improvement back to engaging, fun teaching with student interaction.
The 2023 Surgeon General's report says up to 95% of kids 13 to 17 use social media. Former Surgeon General Dr. Vivek Murthy even called for tobacco-style warning labels on social media platforms, saying they're associated with significant mental health harms for adolescents.
The data also shows when kids are spending more than three hours on average, that they face nearly double the risk, increased risk of depression and anxiety symptoms.
But a recent CDC study found about 50% of teenagers between ages 12 and 17 had four or more hours of daily screen time.
I definitely prefer having it, but, I mean, I, I get more work done.
Do you realize, did it make you realize you have an emotional attachment to it?
Oh. I think I knew that before, and I was just kind of avoiding that fact.
You were avoiding that fact before, but now it's like in your face reality.
Oh, yeah, now I know I'm addicted.
Every day, I go straight to my phone when I get home, don't even think about the homework.
But when he's in the walls of Wakefield, he's opening up in other ways.
I feel like, connect with more people and, like, have better conversations than I could have had with the phone.
Student Karen Mine says it's led to a new kind of engagement.
Even just like at lunch, you like talk to each other, you know, like, people bring games to class, and that's something I had never experienced.
You never experienced that kind of engagement?
Well, it was just like, and maybe not since kindergarten, maybe not since preschool.
And the students and teachers here say less isolation has meant less interpersonal conflict.
There were a lot less fights, I haven't seen any this year.
The movement to restrict cellphones in classrooms is growing, with nine states having already passed a ban or restricted cellphone use in schools, and 15 states plus the District of Columbia have introduced legislation to do the same. But not every educator is on board, including Brandon Cardette Hernandez, a former public school principal in New York.
We have to teach digital literacy skills, like, kids need to know how to use social media, and by an outright ban of smartphones in schools, we are not getting any closer to teaching those skills.
He also worries that low-income students relying on the school for access to reliable Wi-Fi are being forgotten in the discussion.
Kids who are ready, the most vulnerable, in the most under-resourced schools, who are ready experiencing skill gaps, those are the kids who are going to be the most harmed.
There's also a very real concern about what happens during an emergency.
I know one of the biggest things that people were worried about was if there's like a lockdown, and like, there's someone in the school, and you need to text your parents, and then all the parents would be going crazy, because they can't text their kids, they don't know if they're okay.
Cabana points out that he thinks phones can do more harm than good in those situations.
Misinformation can be put out on phones, incorrect rumors, perhaps panicking when there shouldn't be, that would just be a hindrance to keeping students safe.
So while the jury's still out if this group would recommend a ban in other schools, one thing is clear, unplugging. Unplugging for them means a nuisance of freedom.
That's the part I really love most, just like honestly, the weight that's kind of been lifted off my shoulders, this freedom taken from us, but we've like gained another freedom, um, I guess like a mental freedom. So I really appreciate that.
Oh, yes, that was good.
Pop quiz, hot shot. What is located on the top floor of the US Supreme Court Building? A diner, a gym, chapel, or an observance?
So we wanted to make sure that we were sharing sort of both sides of the argument, if you will. So, and, and that really has a lot of, some of the next information. So we'll go through that sort of quickly. You saw the bit about, these are sort of where the bright green are, they're stu-, they're darker green, I guess you'd say. They are, they've already enacted their, their statewide laws, partially enacted in the sort of teal color. And then the, the dark gray is under construction and then no policy in the light gray.
Deb, that's out of date.
This one's out of date?
Yeah, because for instance Vermont's not on there. There's a, it's, uh, this legislation in the Vermont State Senate right now. So that's actually very out of date.
All of those under construction.
It's under consideration. Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, the dark ones are all under construction.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah. And, and that video was April, was this, is, was last month? So it is, it's fairly, fairly current. So as Kevin said, the, there is a bill right now in, at, in the Vermont Senate. And it, uh, the first read was in January and then they just pulled it out again. It was sent to the Education Committee. And then in March, they went ahead and pulled that from the Education Committee. I'm just going to guess that the Education Committee's really busy right now. And they sent that over to the Committee on Health and Welfare. So there hasn't been any movement. I checked today, Kevin, I didn't see. You did too? Yeah, I haven't seen any, seen anything else. I went ahead and just sort of summarized in the next few slides what the bill sort of calls for, the why. And then the, um, what's in the bill? And that's right now. And I think the next one is, yes, the results so far. And again, this is just Vermont that they're looking at. So they would like to have the findings from everything by the end of this school year and, or by July and then have schools create policies based on their guidance by December 1, 2025.
Have any of these other schools done it more than a year?
Um, we, there are certainly schools, yes, in the country. Do we know of any in Vermont, Kevin?
I, I'm talking about any others in, in the country done over a year.
Yes.
So you could actually get test data from before, during, and while it's going on to see what has changed in the academic side of it, not just the student mental, what they think about doing it.
Yeah, the New York Times article, it's in the packet, is probably the best short, um, approach to that, that data. And what they talk, they talk about one school as an example, but Jonathan Hay talks about it a lot. Uh, so there's, there's reams of data that, that improves the student outcomes that meant, were mentioned in the video.
They're definitely drama makers, that's for sure.
The cellphones?
Yeah, I, I have a thought on mine, but they are drama makers. Like my wife will say things like, they didn't even love it, they just liked it, who cares? Why does that matter? I mean, it's, it just crosses drama, she's almost 50 years old.
So imagine our adolescent brains as well. So this was pulled out of Hague's research about just the percentage of, um, of our undergraduates diagnosed with mental illnesses. You can see from 2008 to 2018, the, um, you know, such a huge increase. In 2010 is sort of, I think it was 2010 when the smartphone really became sort of accessible to everyone. So you can see a rise and increase. And then again, um, the next slide really just focuses on, um, seeing the different groups of, or the different age groups and how they seem to be impacted by anxiety. What's that?
That sounds just funny.
Yeah.
I'm a green line.
Age 50, nobody thinks.
I ain't care.
Yeah, I did, I actually didn't see that when I.
It made me chuckle when I saw the green line.
Um, one of the things that was brought up in the Hague article from the anxious generation is that in the eighties, we sort of, um, double, eighties and nineties, we sort of doubled down on children and, um, because we, we, um, wanted to put more safety features in and that actually impacted, impacted our students from playing, like many, many of us did. When we were children, we went off and played and then we came home when the dinner bell rang. Um, and this is sort of like the next piece of, um, you know, of that, of, uh, of that in that we're giving kids cellphones because we want to be connected to them at all times and what are we also exposing them to? So a sort of an interesting piece that he mentioned. Oh, and I forgot to put the title up there, sorry about that. So we did distribute a survey to students. We wanted to make sure that we were really clear on why they were taking it. We did not ask the question, would you like a cellphone policy? That would have been obvious. But we asked them, we said that the board tasked a group of people to gather information and that we wanted to know how, um, we wanted to know about sort of each student's interaction with cellphones, their, their experience. And 107 of the students of OV took, of OV, students took the survey. So, um, about 25, little less, about 20% of students took it. Next slide. We'll sort of, you, you had the data before. We certainly just, what grade are you in? So we had a pretty round, a pretty broad range of students that actually took the survey. Next slide. And we asked questions sort of like, have you ever been bullied or harassed through your cellphone? Overwhelmingly, 80% said no. Next slide. Uh, have you ever witnessed someone being bullied or harassed through your cellphone? A little bit, a little higher said yes, but still 64% said no. Have you ever felt that your cellphone has negatively impacted your learning? 77% said no. Very small percentage that didn't even get us an amount said yes. Uh, have you ever felt that your, um, has, have you ever felt that your cellphone has positively influenced your grades? And 54% said yes.
Never asked an alcoholic how they feel about alcohol?
Well, I, I know. But we felt like it was really important to ask these questions. You know, I don't want to make any assumptions. Um, we did say that this is for a cellphone policy. I'd be interested to hear what you all have to say. And have you ever used your cellphone to cheat or help others? You know, we asked the question, um, I'm not sure who, the blue, the blue people.
The honest ones.
Yeah. So, uh, next slide. And do you feel your phone distracts you from your schoolwork or study?
Never. I know.
And, um.
I looked at this, I was like, oh my god.
Little bit, never, 39%. Sure, yeah.
This is hilarious.
And how do you feel when you don't have your phone with you?
Nothing. I try to take my cellphone away from my daughter, like, can't she just touch it? And she freaks out.
And next slide. And how, how often do you typically use your phone during the school day? That one was interesting. Sort of all over there. And how often do you, this was sort of something that the, um, they, they are finding that a lot of students have earbuds with them, so we wanted to find out about that. And, um, 47% said never. This is, that's probably, that's probably accurate. And then smartwatches was also something that was brought, that's more in the elementary school. We, because the elementary schools, the cellphones stay in the backpacks and that's just it. They have smartwatches that they're starting to see sort of pop up. So we thought we would see about that at OV. So I'm interested, did either of you take the, take it or?
I don't remember.
Did you hear any buzz about it or?
I didn't.
Nor did I.
I didn't. I don't know. I can't remember if I took it or not.
That's, yeah, some interesting results.
Right. It would have been the week after break, that's when everyone took it.
Okay, I don't think so then.
So, hmm. Any thoughts on it? I don't want to put you on the spot.
Oh, yeah, that's.
I give you an opportunity if you want to.
I mean, personally, I would have answered differently than a lot of what that had to say. I mean, if it was answering it honestly, if, I think what, I mean, maybe it's just because I don't agree with the results, but, um, I, if they had filled it out with the understanding that it may impact whether or not the board implements a policy, then it definitely would have swayed that, so.
I do think, I do think a lot of people had that in mind. There has been talk about the possibility of a new and stricter phone policy next year, which, like, I, I knew about, but I wasn't aware that everybody kind of knew that. I do think, I see people chewing on their cellphones all the time. I would never, obviously, but I do observe it a lot. And earbuds, I love my earbuds. I love listening to music and I feel like I do see that a lot, but I do think it's more in, like, the juniors and seniors. But I definitely don't think that this is an actual, accurate representation, but rather what teenagers or people who have self-addictions kind of want you to see.
After we read, um, in American Studies last year, after we read 1984, I stopped bringing my earbuds to school. Is that, yeah. It was like a thing about, uh, putting shells in your ears and just all the time, that's addicting. And that's just a little thing I took away from that, so.
Right, right.
Now I just leave those at home.
Well, we felt, we certainly learned from other schools that it was important to get student feedback or student information. And I felt as though it was important that we tell, we say why we're actually gathering this information. Uh, we did go ahead and survey teachers. They had a few less questions, but how many times do you address cellphones in a week? You can tell if that was sort of everything from over 30 times to never. Mostly the highest being the over 30 times. Next slide. And we had 56 respond to this survey. So, oh, you know what? The, I think that the rest of the data, Renee, I, is a few slides down.
Okay.
And then we'll have to go back up to the other. I summarized their thoughts, I must have, okay, oops. A couple more. Okay, so back four slides. Okay, perfect. So, uh, in a given week, how many times do you address earbuds? So we have the data from that. And next slide. Uh, in a given week, how many times, smartwatches don't seem to be a problem at Otter Valley. Are you in favor of a full-day bell-to-bell cellphone ban for all student personnel, personal electronics? 71% of teachers said that they were in favor. So I did go ahead and, um, if I go back up to where the summary was. So we asked teachers to, um, one more, one, actually one more, Renee, please. Yeah. So we, um, we went ahead and we said, is there anything else that you'd like to share with us? And teachers were, staff, they were really thoughtful about the things that they added. And so what I did was I went ahead and sort of summarized, there was a lot of information. I summarized it and we have it in these categories. Next slide. So they shared sort of, um, their, that there was widespread concern. Number one, distraction in the classroom and the reasons why they're using cellphones. And sort of a, um, a quote was, every class, every student, every day. Next. Uh, they shared some, there were messages about concern for impact on mental health. And someone must have read, uh, the book, wouldn't you say, Kevin? By the quote down there, students' brains are being rewired in ways that are not evolutionary, evolutionarily successful.
Maybe, but they could have come to that conclusion on their own.
Yeah, yeah. So teachers really very much said, and I saw this a lot, that they wanted to be sure that, uh, what, whatever, wherever the board lands, that they are, you know, now not the cellphone police. So what is the system that we can, that can be, uh, put in place so that, um, it, it's just sort of like this is what we do? And it's, it's just, it's systematized and, um, it's not individual teachers sort of like fighting the fight every day.
Yeah, can I add to that? That, that was, I think, the overwhelming message from the teachers.
Yes.
That we got over 70% who want to ban, there's another, what was it, 20% that said maybe? And I think some of those maybes are contingent on consistency. Teachers don't want to be arguing with students. They don't want to get in situations where their policy is stricter than somebody else's.
Yes.
They don't want inconsistencies where some people let students use the phones late in the day or if their work's done or to distract them and others don't. And that's why I think this is a board issue, because we have to be the one that set a consistent, uh, program.
Any of those things that you researched, did they have anything on the smartwatches in there?
He wrote the book, I think, before smartwatches were a thing, but I think smartwatches, I disagree with Debbie a little bit. I don't, they may not be an issue right now.
It will be if we ban those.
But I think they will be if we ban them.
Because you can text on them, answer calls, you can do, you can do, look things up, I think.
Got a lot of games and, yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think that, um, you know, that just might be the next thing. So that would be something to consider.
Exactly.
That, I know the elementary schools have said that, um, you know, they would sort of like some support on, um, that's, this is anecdotally, but they would like some support on the smartwatches because they see those coming more and more often. And one of the things that the administration from Otter Valley asked is that, um, whatever the po-, they're looking for, whatever the policy is, whatever the decision is made, that sort of, this is where the board has landed and then, um, they would take on the, sort of, what does the system look like? Just because there's a lot of things that have to consider, so. Next. And then this was just sort of, again, we pulled, pulled these pieces out. Um, one, a couple people mentioned that they did not want it to be, um, a large amount of money spent on the system, if you will. And there were some suggestions for, uh, classroom check-in, checkout. So that was kind of an interesting one because there were some suggestions of classroom check-in, checkout. But I do want to remind everybody that there was an overwhelming sort of sense of, we don't want to be the police, so, um, that would need to be thoughtful. And then that we look to other schools to see what they've done.
Other schools are using pouches. Uh, and they're not that expensive. I think one of the, one of the things we didn't do in the committee is we, we kind of talked from a zero-budget perspective. But it's, uh, uh, it's obviously up to the board to decide whether to spend money on this or not.
The chemistry teacher, she has a pouch for phones. She, since she got here like two years ago. That seems to work well.
Yeah.
And finally, um, just thinking about, um, I do want to mention that there were a few educators that talked about, um, they would hope that there would be an opportunity for music during like independent artwork. And then sort of what happens when our Chromebooks fall short? So, which I would say that, um, I. So, which I would say that I get that as a former teacher, you kind of use whatever you can when that happens. But I, I don't know, in my opinion, if that would be a, we should look at like what's happening with our Chromebooks rather than relying on our cellphones.
The art teachers probably walk when they play some music in there.
What's that?
So the art teachers probably walk when they play some music in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, again, the majority urged for total restriction to preserve focus and structure. That was sort of the overwhelming piece. They did talk about that they wanted to definitely see that we were partnering with families in the community to sort of help support us in whatever, wherever the policy lands and wherever the procedures land at the school, so. Do you have anything else for that one, Kevin?
Yeah, one thing that I learned through this process is that we're actually behind the curve. I thought, oh, this is a cutting-edge idea. And I guess it was a few months ago or a year ago, but it's not now. This is, this is happening, it's, you know, from the map, it's happening nationally. It's happening in state after state. It's happening in Vermont schools. Talked to someone at Virgin's today. They have a band, they're going to go all day bell-to-bell in September. They use pouches, I think. Carwood does it. I didn't speak to anyone there, but from what I hear, it's been a successful layer. And I'm sure there are other schools too. So this, this is, I think, something that's, that's happening. And being intentional about it and being consistent in our approach is, is the real issue as far as I'm concerned.
That's, oh, just sort of final takeaways, but we heard a lot of this before. I think that's a great quote at the bottom, ban them or simplify how we manage them. They really don't want this to overtake what's happening, yeah.
Did you guys in the committee talk about like teachers' expectations and their uses of cellphones?
We did not, we did not. But that would certainly, I would think, need to sort of look into the big picture of that because that's really a cultural thing, so. Thank you. And again, so that would probably fall under, well, it could fall under the policy because one of the things that the state of Vermont suggests is that we tie in, or the bill suggests, if it goes through, that teachers are, the schools are not communicating with, with students through social media, so they're not sort of, that's not a place to get your information. So that could be something that could be in there.
Does that also include like sports games? Oh, okay.
So the stu, we aren't saying like, hey, we're going to take your phones and, oh, by the way, rely on Facebook or something else to get, you know, changes in schedules?
I see what you mean, but I'm kind of like specifically, like there are a lot of student-run accounts where people post about sports, but also like the announcements talk about it. So are we saying that, like we have O V House of Noise, right?
Yeah, but those aren't affiliated with the school.
It's affiliated, but it's not.
It's not run by the school.
Would we still be allowed to have those?
I think it would be up to what the, so this is about, so we're making, not recommendations, we're sharing all the information that we found with the board. The Senate has a bill that is suggesting, and the only information that they put in there is that schools not use social media to communicate with students. What that looks like will have to be fleshed out.
That form, is it on?
Instagram.
So we're not talking about that, like we didn't, like this phone ban has, doesn't sound like it spoke about social media use.
Right.
Only if the state says that. Because there, there's the concern at the state level that, that there's communication between adult students through social media like direct messages. So that's, that's the concern, whether even if it's a, I think they're just worried about that potential
Yeah.
lack of oversight, since it's not a communic, it's not a school communication method. So it's not necessarily an educational record, although it becomes an educational record if it's a, if it's a school employee to a student.
Right. And we have a policy that already addresses that, that gives guidelines for staff communicating with students through social media, so.
But I would think once you're out of school, if there's a schedule you want to look up, you can look that up on your phone because you're out of school.
Right, this is just during school.
So then you get your schedule and you know where you're going for your game. No, no need to find that at lunchtime.
Academic work can't go through social media, right? Communications with the teacher.
Yeah.
About your academic program curriculum. That's how I would see it. I think that's, I think that's it, Renee.
Okay. Yep, because then we just get to all the, and then there's the.
That's what we were sent in the, in your packet, all of that information. Well, thank you.
So at this time, is there a motion that anyone wants to make? Do we want more information? What do we want to do?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the administration present a cellphone policy to the board for review at the, I forget the term, our August meeting.
At our board retreat?
A board retreat, yeah. For approval from the board at that time.
We already have a cellphone policy, so do you mean a ban?
Thinking means a ban.
Do you want to amend that?
Okay.
Say a ban?
A cellphone ban policy?
Policy that.
Well, yeah, because you receive feedback about a ban, which would, could be one component. Or if it's the.
Bell-to-bell?
If it's bell-to-bell, it could be a ban. But if you, if we use the, the wall things where they go in and they, they turn them in at the beginning of every class, they get them at the end of every class, that's not necessarily a ban. So you would have to be very specific as to what you are.
Right.
If you just want a policy.
Teachers don't want that.
Okay, I'll, I'll move for a ban then.
Okay. So you want a cellphone policy, you want a ban on cellphone use policy?
Yeah, I want to leave some flexibility for the administration about implementation, about best methodologies, so forth. But, you know, hate's so clear that the kind of policy we, we have where, which seems to be theoretical more than in practice, that kids can use them in the hallways, they can use them at lunch, they can use them in free periods and so forth, is disastrous and ineffective both. So, yeah, so I'll move that the, I better write this down, that the administration present us with a plan for a cellphone ban in August for approval from the board.
Is it appropriate for me to add, to ask a question?
Well, why don't we get a second and then you can ask? Okay, so Natalie, a second, what's your question?
So my question is, for clarity, on the ban, right now, the expectation is that students do not have cellphones out in the class, like during learning instructional time, which can be vague because a teacher can say, we're done with instructional time. You have ten minutes on your phone. Kevin mentioned the piece about the, the research that Hague mentioned about, you know, in-between classes and things like that. A ban, I guess that ban is so broad. Are you thinking ban just on instructional time?
No, no, I, my preference is for bell-to-bell. I think that the way I've worded this resolution is so the administration can have some, isn't, isn't handcuffed immediately. And that, that some of these considerations that, that have come up have, have time to get discussed. I, I'll say, you know, I don't think it's a surprise to anybody that I'm strongly against any kind of watering down or loopholes you can drive a phone through. But I think that the board shouldn't necessarily be dictating to the administration. We want to, we want to give you a chance to think things through and, thinking through, things, things, think things through thoroughly and, and give the teachers time to know what's coming and to feel supported.
I would just like to add, though, that I would like to see you at least think about the smartwatch issue because that can also help in our elementary grades and possibly, you know, stem the tide here at the high school.
Be forward-thinking.
Right, that's the one. So not necessarily telling you how to do it, but just think about.
Personal devices.
Yeah, exactly.
And then also follow up on our, the, the comment of the teacher use as well during the workday.
Right, yeah.
Also, Kevin, I just have a question. So for the bell-to-bell, do you, have you guys talked about how that would work with people with split schedules? So people who come in late or leave early?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
Cell-to-cell, sorry, bell-to-bells seems to be the standard that works. I'm sure those sorts of issues have been figured out in other places, but we, we have not discussed this.
So are you looking for a policy and a procedure? Because the, the procedure, I'm just making some assumptions. You know, you, you implement something and then you find where, where the loopholes are or where the, the system isn't working well. We did see a couple of policies where they put everything in it and then you would have to go back to the board in order to sort of change that again.
So the policy is, is ours, but the procedure is really yours.
Right.
And so we don't want any, we don't want any input into the procedure at this point.
Yeah, when they invent chips to be put into brains, which I guess have already been invented. That doesn't, that doesn't necessarily, that's a procedural issue, not a policy.
That's the second dystopia reference that we gave today.
Wow, okay.
Brett has his hand raised.
Yeah, Brett, sorry, I didn't know you were here. Hello.
No worries, sorry I was late, everyone. Yeah, so I, I can tell that I'm going to become a pest on this one because I, I feel pretty strongly in the opposite direction of Kevin. And, and I think, I, I question how a ban will age in the context of things like burning books or mask mandates, some of the things that really just haven't stood the test of time. I think we are missing the mark entirely by talking about a cellphone ban. We have a social media problem in this country. We do not have a cellphone problem. Cellphones are a tool and much like forever, students were frowned upon for using a calculator only to graduate and never do things the old way again. I think AI has opened up those doors for almost every subject. And we should treat it as a tool, that's what it is. And I think that this will age very poorly, a total ban on cellphones.
Okay.
Can I add to this?
Um, any, yeah, any other discussion, go ahead.
Just to that point, I think that so, while social media may be the bigger part of the issue, phones are still an issue because it's not a hundred percent of the time that students are looking to social media. Like, I think I've looked at mine, you pick up my phone like a hundred times a day just to look at something. It's that quick dopamine, even if it's not actively scrolling on social media. It's looking around your phone, maybe you have a mobile game or something. So there's more.
Yeah, but I mean, I, if we look over time, right, there's, there was comic books, there was magazines. You know, this is not a new problem. Students who don't want to be engaged are going to find ways to not be engaged. I, I think we're chasing a symptom and not the problem.
Okay. Did you have anything else to say, Brendan?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, thank you.
I'm just wondering, so the policy. I mean, we need to see the procedure, right?
Say that again.
Shouldn't we see the procedure?
If you want to ban from bell-to-bell, then you don't need to see the procedure as to how that's carried out.
But then the policy is, let's just ban cellphones bell-to-bell. Like, what, what do we have to see? What more do we have to see?
What more did you want to see?
You know what I mean? Like, I don't know what, because the policy is this, it's the nuances of the, of how you implement the policy is what I'm curious about, like.
I think you'll find that out as a parent. So.
See, and that's when, when we bring it in August, you can give us feedback on the policies, I'm sorry, the procedures. But if we, if that, if the procedures are effectively the policy, that if we need to adjust it at all, we have to come back here and it'll be three months before we're able to change any of the, any of the things that need to be changed. Because it'll become board policy and we'd have to.
Is that enough time, though? Is that enough time for you to implement policy and procedure by the start of school?
It depends. It depends if, policy, yes, we can definitely write procedures and, and train people on it, but it depends upon what we choose. If we say everybody leave their stuff at home, that is no cost to us, but might be a little bit more challenging. If we do the, if we do the pouches, that's going to be a cost. Then we have to train people on it. We'll have to come up with systems to put it in, to put it into place. And then.
So the pouches I don't see as a policy, I see that as the inflammation to, of the policy.
I still think that's a burden to the administration and teachers. I don't think we should be dealing with it.
So, yeah, so that's why I would say we should likely come to you with a policy that is ready to go in August and then it come to you with draft procedures that may not be ready to go in August, but would be ready to go potentially in November or January, something like that, where we would be able to come back and, and test it among administrators and teachers and the board and students. Because that would, that would be a really quick turnaround, given that it's literally just three months away.
That said, if the Senate bill goes through, they would like policies done by December, so.
Yeah, so we'd be on track.
We'd be ahead of the curve there.
We're at least starting now.
We're, we're not inventing the wheel, that this, these issues have been considered in other places in, and in Vermont, other places in Vermont. So there are, there are examples and, and there are conversations that can be had in other places about what works and what doesn't.
And the state, I, it's in one of the links, the state has provided us with guidance about how to, how to build one and what to consider.
Okay.
So Natalie, with your permission, I'd, I'd like to change the motion to a personal device ban rather than cell, cellphone.
Oh, yeah. I don't think you might permission.
Well, you do because you have to second it again.
Oh, because I seconded it.
Yeah.
Personal device.
Personal device, it's no smartwatches.
I like that idea, covers all equipment.
Okay, any other discussion before we vote? Okay, all those in favor of the personal device ban to be, or to be brought before the board at the board retreat in August, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
And then, I, I think Fernanda said yes, and then I think Brett said no.
He said no, I just thought it was a theme.
Yeah, there was another no, but it wasn't a board member. And all those that abstain? Okay, there you go.
So what's the count?
So the count should be, there's, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. There's nine of us here. One person said no, one person abstained, which is me essentially because I didn't vote. And so seven said yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, moving on, the O V U U S D Outlook discussion, so that's me. I've had multiple discussions in the last couple of months with Renee, Brenda Fleming, Melinda's been involved with some of it. And so I want to talk about us as a board being proactive, especially in this climate with what's going on in the legislature, you know, how many districts are we going to be going down to? What's going to happen? know, how many districts are we going to be going down to, what's going to happen between now and the end of the year, up in the legislature, or potentially in five years, depending on what legislation passes, if any passes. So there's a couple of things that, because I feel like, and you can, you might have other ideas, but this is where I'm coming from, when I look at our school district or when I look at our school here in Otter Valley and all of our surrounding elementary schools, if we were to ever be closed, because essentially, if they reduce the number of school districts, that's what's going to happen, schools are going to close, mainly because of all of the different things that they're talking about, minimum class sizes, you name it, they're talking about it. I feel it's important that Otter Valley is still here, because if Otter Valley were to close, our kids would probably either go to Rutland City, or they would go to Middlebury, and I don't think either one of those choices are good for our kids, I think we are good for our kids. We're not perfect, I know that, but I think that we do lots of things here that those schools don't. We have Muslimu, we have tech ed, we have all sorts of other stuff, we have a great music and theater program, we, you know, I can keep going on and on. However, having said that, there are some things we definitely need to consider if we are going to be proactive and we are going to be able to move forward as a school, not necessarily as a school district. A couple of the things we, I've been talking about, and none of these are necessarily my idea, but they are ideas that have been floated and I think we need to talk about them. For the year 25, 26, which is this coming fall, the way we've budgeted, everything stays the same status quo, except for maybe our cellphone or personal device ban, but when we budget for the 26, 27 year, we need to make some, we need to contemplate some very serious changes. First one of those is that I think we need to think about, well, we're always contemplating, we're always talking space, right? We're always saying, "Where's the space, where's the this, where are we gonna, you know, how are we gonna, you know, Neshabie keeps filling up, blah, blah, blah." So here's some of my potential changes that I want you to consider, and so you're going to have lots of time to consider it before we budget, but I think we want to talk about all of our preschool kids, except for the ones at Cavali, because it's too far away, but all of our preschoolers, the three and four-year-olds at Neshabie and at Whiting right now, need to be moved to a school that they're all together, and I would like them to be at Lester, or OCA Lester. That would allow those K through fifth or sixth grade, depending on what's still in those schools at that time, to move into Neshabie. I, it would remove the, it would remove the issue of us having to have multi-age classrooms at OCA, which are not, I can tell you from my own kids' personal experience, they are not necessarily good for kids, they're not even good for teachers. It's very hard to teach two grade levels at the same time. It also helps alleviate some space. If you pull out the three and four-year-olds from Neshabie, you now have two more classrooms, and Lester would have plenty of room for 70 or 80 preschool kids, because they have three or four classrooms, we could have more classes, you know, we could have additional classes, we could even potentially field a full-day program there, if we wanted to think about that. Those are the first two couple of changes. The other thing that we need to be proactive about is, we've talked about it a little bit, but I think we need to start talking to our, our surrounding districts and ask them about joining us, especially the ones that are in greater Rutland, they are the closest to us, they, it would make lots of sense for them to join us, because as everyone knows, Lothrup has dwindling enrollment, and I think if we can bolster their numbers, that would allow for some great moves for us, to bring more elementary kids into Pittsburgh. And it would also alleviate us potentially from having to add-on to Otter Valley to bring our sixth graders in, we might be able to actually have a middle school in a school that's very close to us. What else am I forgetting? There's lots of things, I didn't write it down, I've just had these impassioned speeches many times and they told me to finally just say it to the board, and so I'm saying it to the board. But in order to do this, we have to start now, and we have to really, and this is going to be a change to the, to, it's going to be a change to our towns, that we're probably going to see some arguments against us. Oh, some of the other things I forgot to mention, Sudbury has asked me when they might get their school back, because they are looking at a community, they want a community space, and so they have asked if Sudbury might be able to be given back to them, and if so, when. There are some issues there, mainly because we've used some title, some sped monies to update the building, and so that may be an issue if we have to pay that money back, or if we have to pay that money back, but it would also allow us to close Whiting if we moved our preschoolers to Lester, and we could divulge ourselves of that building. Having done that, we might want to keep North Campus, if we move our Sudbury kids over to North Campus, we may have to think about some playground equipment, because there isn't anything over at North Campus, but maybe we could move this stuff over from Sudbury, or, I mean, it's not that expensive, we could probably buy a slide and a swingset, something like that. But anyway, those are things we have to start thinking about, is, is those buildings and, and do we need them, and when can we, if we're not going to use them, let's give them back to the communities that they belong to. So, that's pretty much all I have to say, but I think we have to start being proactive, and I think we may upset some of the communities, because we're talking about moving students to different schools, but I think in the long term, it will bolster community, especially around our three and four-year-olds, to be all together and to move together, and then the same with our, our elementary kids, so, and our high school kids, if they're together, so. Any questions? I kind of threw a lot at you, I didn't give you any time to think about it, but it's all stuff that I think we have to think about, and I think we have to start budgeting around it.
These are all things I've thought about before, anyway, so...
All right, well, there we go, so I just said them for you. So there you go. Okay, Brett, Bren, Brett, no, Brett, there you go, sorry.
Totally agree with a lot of what you're saying, one thing I was curious about is if, I, this, I don't want to put more work on anybody, but it would be nice to know, like, what we have for options, like, and when I say that, I mean, like, okay, a classroom at Lothrup is built for X amount of students, a classroom at Lester is built for X amount of students, maybe it's all the same, I don't know, but if, if there's differences in classroom sizes, you know, physically, that would, that would change the number of students you could put into them, I would think, and, and I just think, having that information is something we're probably going to need when we have these discussions.
We already have that, that information, honestly, because it's all based on square footage of how many kids you can put in a classroom, so we have that information, it's just a matter of providing it to you.
Because I think, you know, you, you talked about facilities a lot, and that's a piece of the puzzle, but also I think we have a class size problem that somehow we need to try to fix.
Well, I mean, we know we have a class size problem at Pittsburgh, I mean, we, we constantly talk about whether we're going to have a class size of 24, if we're going to have a class size of 11, and, you know, bringing in more kids to Pittsburgh or Lothrup would alleviate a lot of that, I think, and it would help bring down our cost of our schools, because we would, we would be able to spread the cost over more people, more property, I guess, if we're continuing to use the property tax, and I think it brings more kids together, which I think is also important, so. So anyway, so just keep that in the back of your mind, it's all stuff that I think, you know, we need to really be considering when we're budgeting for the next year, okay?
For 26, 27.
26, 27, yep. Yep.
Okay, so we'll have to get some, once we look at the options, we'll also get, need to get some modeling in place for you as well.
Yeah. Okay, other business.
This was my last meeting, but I was kind of surprised that nothing came up about the teacher-student issue that was going on in Otter Valley.
So that is under review right now, it's, there is an investigation happening, and so until that investigation is over, there is nothing to be said at this time.
And it's a personnel matter, which we can't speak publicly about, right?
True.
It answers why.
Yeah. Any other business? Okay, Superintendent Informational Report, anything you'd like to tell us?
Yeah, there's a couple things, so first of all, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week in Vermont, this gives us the opportunity to tip our hats to the incredible educators who make learning come alive in our classrooms. Our teachers just don't teach, they light fires that inspire students to continue learning outside of the classroom, they're preparing for classes on after-school and on weekends, and they're the ones cheering louder than anyone when a struggling student finally gets it. They're the ones who know somehow exactly when a student needs an encouraging word or a high five, they help each child feel like they're the only ones who matters. So while we may only celebrate them officially one week a year, the truth is that they influence our kids' futures, and for that, we owe them more thanks than we could ever express. So thank you to our teachers. A couple more things, so we, thanks to Brenda and her staff, we have a summer meal box program that will be kicking off on Fridays at OV and at Lothrup, and we have already registered up to 400 families, so...
Wow, that's awesome.
And that was through May 1st, so I'm really excited about that, because I think I love, it's important for us to help the community, but it's also, that means we have a lot of fa, a lot of families who need help, so we'll be looking to figure out other ways that we can help our, our, our families. And then the other just really big one for us is congrats to the Otter Valley Theater Program and its one-act play, Queens.
Yeah!
They earned first place at the Vermont Drama Council State Competition on April 11th and 12th, and then they performed this past weekend at the New England Theater Festival, so if you could speak a little bit about it, Brendan, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, so we went last Thursday for, until we left on Saturday, and we got to see, I believe, performances from nine other schools, so, there were a lot of shows involved, but, yeah, and then we got to do some fun workshops with, pertaining to the tech side of it or acting techniques and such, you know, overall, it was a really fun experience, so we're glad to make it.
So...
And get our name on the banner and the gymnasium.
So was that a competition, or was it just kind of a...
That was more of just like a...
It was a showcase.
Yeah, celebratory final lap.
But we could tell that we were better than everybody else.
I think so, yeah.
Well, only, only he could do Henry VIII as well, that's right.
And then, also, so when we, we came in first here, did, did you win an individual award, too?
I did not.
Okay, did we, do they give individual awards?
They did at the previous, what is it, three rounds before this?
Right.
Yeah, two or three, yeah, three or whatever rounds before this.
But not the showcase.
No, okay.
Not the showcase, which I believe, yeah, there were at least five people that won individual actor award, I don't know their names off the top of my head.
That's fine.
Yeah, so...
That's really exciting.
And there was a thing called the Tech Olympics there, which all the technical people competed in to see who could perform a set of tasks the fastest, and out of the three of them, two Otter Valley students get this.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I could keep going, but that's a great way to end.
Okay, all right, so we have an OVUU Facilities Committee meeting next Tuesday, May 12th, and we're also going to meet again as the Facilities Committee on Tuesday, May 19th, yay, and our next board meeting here is Tuesday, June 3rd. We don't need executive session, do we?
No.
Okay.
Well, there's a play this weekend, sorry.
We don't?
No.
Okay.
Oh, right, The Witch is, The Witch is Princess is this weekend.
Friday and Saturday evening, 7:30.
This is the 7th through 9th grade.
What's it called again?
Witch is Princess.
The witch is singular.
Do you want...
Yeah, witch possessive.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. And while you're talking about it, then the, the, the 10th through 12th grade will be doing theirs, May 3rd and 31st.
Shakespeare, Abridged, I want to say, is the title of that one?
Yeah.
It should also be fun, it should be fun.
Yep, should be great.
We should probably do a quick executive session.
Oh, okay, so we are going to do executive session, so...
Could I also mention that there is the Big Art Show, which is a K-12 art show at Otter Valley this Wednesday at 6 o'clock?
This Wednesday or next Wednesday?
I'm sorry, next Wednesday.
And the Spring Concert.
And the Spring Concert, the jazz and chorus, yeah, so May is full. Okay, so we are going to have an executive session, I have no idea what time it is.
Move for executive session to 8:07.
8:09.
8:09, okay. Bye, good night, guys.
Bye.